All right. Let me call a public hearing to order. It's now 6:45, maybe 6:46 by someone's watch, Tuesday the 23rd. The press and public have been notified. A public hearing to hear discussion on ordinance 2012-8, ordinance amendment Title V, planning development, chapter four, zoning article two, yada, yada, yada. It's an ordinance to prohibit tourist homes, rooming houses, and boarding houses in commercial districts, increase minimum lot size in the LC Limited Commercial District, and to amend other clerical areas and omissions in the Commercial District Regulations. Does Sardan have a list that please walk us through this?
Thank you, Mayor. Several months ago, the Planning Commission began analyzing the commercial zoning district and all of the provisions associated with that, with those districts. And what you have here is a, is a number of changes. A lot of them are just editorial or typographical in nature. There were a lot of misplaced or misdirected references that would refer you to a section, and that section had nothing to do with the issue at hand. So they cleaned up a lot of those small things. There are two fairly major changes, though, that I'll point out in addition to those clerical changes. The first, as you mentioned, this code would delete tourist homes, rooming houses, and boarding houses from the commercial district. And this was really an effort of the Planning Commission to be consistent with what happened in 2004. And as some of you will remember, in 2004, the city created the GC3 zoning district, and there were a lot of moving pieces in that change in creating that district. But that basically was done to stop the proliferation of residential uses in the other zoning districts. But at the second reading of that code, there was kind of a last-minute decision to prohibit hotels and single-family residences in all of the commercial districts. Well, residences were allowed in GC3, but to stop hotels throughout all of the districts. But they left in, or it was left in, that rooming houses, boarding houses, and tourist homes were still allowed as a special exception. So I think that that was, as best we can tell, that was just an oversight, because those uses really are fairly close to things that were being deleted. So we thought it would be most consistent to delete those at this time. That's the first major change. The other major change is amending the minimum lot size for the LC district. Currently, our code actually has a maximum lot size of 8,000, which we know is a, that is a typographical area, error. That should be the minimum lot size, of 6,000 square feet, sorry. And this amendment would change that to 8,000. The Planning Commission looked at that district and realized that it's really supposed to be a transitional district between residential districts and commercial districts. The smallest residential district has a lot size requirement of 8,000 square feet, and the Commission felt that really, to be consistent and be in scale with that surrounding residential character, that those, that lot size should be pushed up slightly from 6,000 to 8,000. So those are the changes.
Okay. And for those just up here who need to know where the district is, you can see it on the map that Douglas passed out. It's, I'm almost going to say it's pink, but...
It's so bright.
It's the, I can call it purple in my eyes, but that's the only portion of the, of our areas that are affected by the LC district change, correct?
That's right. LC is, that district includes the city's property and the office at the curve of 21st Act, current. I will say that I think the Planning Commission sees that district as if there's going to be commercial development, I think they foresee that be a good district to use, because it is a good transition district.
Okay. Any public comments? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we'll convene council meeting at seven o'clock and take these matters up promptly. Thank you. October 23rd. All council members are present in the conference. Thank you for coming. The public press has been duly notified. I'm going to please ask everybody to stand for an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Let us bow our heads. O Heavenly Father, please care for the men and women who serve this city and receive such little recognition, but who are always there when we need calls. Please continue to watch over the citizens of this island as each is very special. As we show tonight our support for all those who have faced breast cancer, dear Lord, please know that we love and care for all of them, and seek your hand in guiding us to a lasting cure. For it is in your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. Thank you. Marie, can you please call a roll?
Councilmember Bergberg here. Councilmember Teller.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
Yo.
Councilmember Stone.
Good sir.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Cronin.
Present.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney Harris.
Here.
All right. Full house. Very good. Next item on our agenda is reading of the journals, previous meetings. You have the minutes from the public workshops, filmed on July 17th, and the regular meetings from September 20, 2012. May I have a motion?
Approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? Unheard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We now have the pleasure of appointing administrative vote to two new employees. Can I ask Chad King to please step forward?
Can we get a motion first, Mayor?
Oh, you're holding me to. All right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve. It's fair enough. It's just Chad King and that's one.
Second.
Motion is second. Hold these gentlemen. Any discussion unheard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, Chad will meet me down front if you don't mind.
I'm going to be on camera, so you've got to smile. You just don't need to repeat after me.
Put your hand on the Bible. Raise your, raise your right hand. I, Chad King.
I, Chad King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the ordinances of the City of Alapam.
Or the ordinances of the City of Alapam.
To perform the duties of the position.
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
With the best of my abilities.
With the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And then, Chad King, so as you've been working at the Lever Correctional Institution, is you already staffed as a officer?
Yes, Sergeant, yes, in death row. That's what I have since the last three years. So you can imagine the change for me.
I was going to say, opposite ends of the spectrum.
My view driving the island every day is much...
But you come from the island.
All the way from summer.
Yes, sir.
Well, good luck. Welcome to the team.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Matt. Matt Storins here. Come on out. So it's better being second, of course.
It is.
All right. I'm Matt Storin.
I'm Matt Storin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the citizens of the City of Alapam's ordinances.
According to the City of Alapam's ordinances.
To perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of the position which I have been selected.
Of the position which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
With the best of my abilities.
With the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome.
Sir.
Your firm is a trophy.
I am.
You've been working with the trophy department for years. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes. Before we jump into the office, which everybody is so anxious to get into, I'd like to have a motion to reorder the agenda and move item nine up on the agenda. Bill's already in possession, so we can deal with 2012-07 and 08. Can I have such a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We're moving this up in deference for Douglas, so he can, this is probably the audience looking for a mayor, so he left already. So hopefully after we dispense with this, he can get back and change a diaper or do something, do something constructive. All right, we have before us 2012-07, an ordinance amending Title V, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter One, Traffic Regulations, Article C, standing Parking of Vehicles, Section 8-1-32, General Prohibitions of the City of Alapam's Code and Ordinance to Prohibit Parking and Street Pavement on Streets Where Streets Have No Street Curbs. Has a motion to approve second reading?
Second.
You suspend the reading of the order. Motion is second. Any discussion on this?
I'm not familiar with this one, Mr. G. How about moving vans and things of that nature of people? Is that included in this? Could somebody be ticketed?
Anything parked on the street would be ticketed. Now, obviously, if they're loading a vehicle or something like that, they don't, you see.
They what?
They give them some grace.
Right. But it would be in the law, right?
As it is now, principally.
And delivery trucks and everything. What have you covered?
Well, like your children's birthday party parking on the street, yeah.
Again, if a Benett's truck pulls up, no, no policeman's going to stop him. And if he parks and goes to lunch, there's going to be traffic on the street. Sort of sounds.
Right.
Well, they think, I was thinking of a large house that was moving, contents, you know, a big truck, be out there all day. They can't get the yard. But it does, I mean, we're just leaving up the discretion of the officers.
Correct. I've never known them not to be discreet in those matters. As long as they impede the traffic, it's safe for traffic to move around vehicles.
I just hope that we do give some discretion to family gatherings. It's like, oh, these are my relatives.
I think we see that, we see that now, and you see trucks parked in the middle of small bullmarts in front of the red and white, whatever you have to say. Kicking on the windshield in place for a white, white car. Commercial vehicles, we have a second law to make sure that they're in a safe condition. Any further discussion?
And I think that, I'll be with this, Mayor, so the police department uses their discretion now to move vehicles that are legally parked in the road because they're obstructing traffic or they're obstructing the normal flow of traffic now, and they have every discretion to do that as well. Except this, this ordinance, while a lot of our ordinances target different areas of the island, they kind of have to paint the whole island the same brush. I think the Department of Defense is using their discretion on this.
All right, good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One may. Thank you. Motion carries. Ordinance 2012-08, ordinance amendment Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter Four, Zoning, Article Two, District Regulations, City of Alapam's Code and Ordinance to Prohibit Tourist Homes, Rooming Houses, Boarding Houses, Commercial District, Increase Minimum Lot Size in LC Women and Commercial, to amend other clerical areas and omissions within the Commercial District. We have a motion to approve second reading and suspend the reading of the ordinance.
Motion.
Motion is second. And second. Any discussion on this? We just heard from Douglas on how this came about.
I wanted to ask a question. Are there lots in this district now that are 6,000 feet or between eight and six? And will those be grandfathered in if something were to happen? Because it doesn't make so much if something happens. Are they grandfathered in as existing?
There is not, there are no lots that are smaller than eight. So this would not be creating...
It would be informing, right? Yeah, that was my question, when is this creating non-conforming properties of that?
Okay, good. Any other questions? Unheard. All in favor, ordinance, second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unheard. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you.
Now, we're up to the portion of our hereby citizens' conference. And on your agenda, you can see that we've got the annual presentation from Greenfinian court. They're going to talk to us about our FYI financial audit.
That rule will be dispensed with the reading.
Come on, quick, second. David, are you going to do the honors? David Phillips of Virginia Court, he has been with us for the last quarter, so.
David, we're going to ask you to go to the bottom so that your cat can click her up.
All right, sounds good.
And if you would adjust that for your best possible.
All right, let me do this thing. Before you get started, how many of these do you give here?
I probably do personally around 15.
Okay.
Yeah, Fran probably does, you know, 60, 60. And we're probably, 50 of those are governments. So our niche really is governments. We really kind of have, you know, a really good understanding of kind of what transpires in that arena.
Well, you're in the right place, though.
Yeah. You know, one thing I wanted to mention to you, I don't know if you noticed, what do you have different this year than you had last year?
More money.
More money.
Me.
Hey, well, that's a good point, too. If you notice, there's, you've always had a report, but it's always been drafted. And this is the first year we've actually finished everything prior to this meeting, and so that everything is finalized. And because usually there were some small little things that we were still working on, but Linda and Debbie and them really wanted to get it all the way done, so we wouldn't have to carry this thing on at all into the holiday season. So I just wanted to thank them for the time of us pushing hard to get through this, you know, and that takes up, of course, more of their time. So again, thank you for that. All right. As you know, this can be a little long and hard to read. I saw Mr. Ward there had already really head-bruised a lot of this document. But what we have found to be sometimes the best is just do a quick PowerPoint, try to hit the highlights. Because for you, a lot of you, you're really already focused on 13th, and in fact, some of you are even thinking about the 14 budget. So again, we're going to kind of go through fairly quickly, and if there's any questions coming up, please feel free to interject, to stop me as we go through. All right. I'm always afraid that these things won't work.
But what's happening to that?
Ah, it does work. All right, there we go. We want to look at first here at the highlights, just a real quick snapshot. The year-end financial condition is very good. The fund balance for the general fund increased 206,000. Now, that's even after you transferred some of those year-end excesses to your capital projects fund for some projects that you're intended to do down the road. Right here, you see the city's net assets, those are those government-wide financial statements, they increased about, about 970,000. And you have an unqualified opinion, and we'll look at that on the next slide, you know, what that means. All right, let's see that. This is not good. I might need your help, Debbie. Here. Some reason the battery, it doesn't seem like it's reaching.
Click one.
Yeah, that'd be great. Then I can't be gone.
How do I make that thing hold?
He did it. Yeah. It's an exit.
Go to the keypad.
It's an escape.
What do you mean the keypad?
It's the computer interface.
That's fine.
There's the key.
It's yours, that's good.
No. Pretty quick.
All right. Next slide. All right. Again, we like to remind everybody what an audit is, because there's always, in governments, there's some transitioning of board members or council members and so forth. Again, these are the city's financial statements. You know, our responsibility is to express an opinion. We give you, I'm going to skip one down, we give you reasonable assurance. We don't give you absolute assurance. The only way we can give you absolute assurance is if we looked at every single transaction that took place, and we were perfectly correct in always analyzing those transactions appropriately. And that we would always hit it right, understand it, and not make a mistake ourselves. And so again, what we do to get to reasonable assurance is we do a lot of sampling. We look at significant transactions, and then we may take samples of really big populations. Let's say you had thousands of checks that were issued. Well, we'll take a sample of those checks, and we'll look at those, and if we don't come across any errors in there, then we can get statistically that the remaining population does not have errors as well. So we use that methodology a lot, like you see in polling data as well. And we have to keep our independence. If it ever got to a point where we were doing too much in the financial statements, if we were booking your entries, you know, that we were doing your day-to-day accounting, then how can we audit what we did ourselves? And so, you know, that's real key to us. But the good thing is you have the best opinion that an auditor can give. It's called an unqualified opinion. That's good, because there's other opinions out there that are qualified, which means everything looks good except for some. We did not come across anything that we were aware of that was materially misstated. Let's look at your fund balance. I know this is the real driver. Everybody likes to keep this before them. Again, we highlight the fact that your fund balance increased 206,000. You have total fund balance of 4.8 million, which is 60% of your 2012 fiscal year expenditures. And your fund balance policy says you need to maintain 30%. So you can see you're in good stead as it relates to that. You have unassigned fund balance of 2.36 million, which is 30% of your 2012 expenditures, and your fund balance policy recommends 20%. The GFOA, which is kind of like the Bible of governance, it always recommends a minimum of two months. That would be about 16.7%. So you can see you're in good stead as it relates to what they would say would be the minimum recommendation there. So again, you have a healthy fund balance at the end of the year. I did want to note one thing we didn't highlight. See the difference there between the total fund balance of 4.8 and the unassigned of 2.36? Those monies are either committed, they're restricted, and a lot of that, remember, was committed for disaster recovery. You have about 1.84 million dollars that's been committed for some type of disaster recovery that ever occurred. And so somehow, that doesn't show up on the slide, but I want you to know there's some monies there that have been set aside for those purposes. Okay. Okay, what's the reason to have a good fund balance? Remember, some of your revenues are very cyclical. A lot of your, you know, real property taxes, those levies go out in October, you pretty much collect it all in December, January, February. And you really don't collect a lot more real property taxes until the next property tax cycle. You get some vehicle and some delinquents and stuff that come in late. So it's important that you have a good fund balance. Again, it helps your credit score. If you need to go issue debt, you're going to get better rates on that debt. It helps you with an emergency or revenue shortfall. You know, we're talking about some type of disaster. Well, you'd like to be able to respond, because FEMA might take a year or two before they reimburse you. So you want to be able to have resources available to be able to respond quickly, knowing that hopefully one day you'll get paid back on some of those, if it was some type of natural disaster that FEMA's covering. It helps you with planned expenditure. I know some of y'all have been talking about trying to go foreign and pay more than cash on some of your purchases for equipment and trucks and vehicles. You have that flexibility to do that. And again, it helps you just with flexibility for any other discretionary funding needs. Okay, let's look at your revenues. Your revenues increased 337,000 to approximately 8.3 million dollars. And we just kind of tried to highlight where those key drivers were. You had 32 in property taxes. The real key here, I really think, is, is the licensing permits. You're starting to see an improvement in the economy, so you're starting to see those licenses and permits start to go upward. The real other key here is in that $115,000 increase in all other. Remember, you had a part, a kind of a refund, a partial refund of the old healthcare plan that you were in. It was $139,000. You're also getting a little bit more of that in 2012, but these are kind of like one-time events. They're not going to keep going after these two payments are received. Those revenues are not going to be there going forward. But I did want to highlight that, and we kind of put that down there for you to see so that you would know that there was this one-time $139,000 rebate or refund from the old healthcare plan. Let's look at your expenditures. You had a 78,000 increase to 7.9. We tried to kind of just show you, you know, visibly what functions that they came from. But you know, what's interesting, if you looked at it, you see it's 78,000, but of that, I think 60, I think I wrote it down, 62,000 of that was fuel costs. And you budgeted a certain amount, you expect a certain amount that came in higher than you thought, and that's a very hard thing to predict. The other amount was really personnel cost. And that's pretty low when you look at 78,000 dollars over your overall budget. That's a pretty small increase compared to what we're seeing in most of our governments. Most of them have a hard time keeping an increase in their expenditures below 3%. It's very difficult with health insurance and everything else that's going on out there. Next slide. Okay, and let's look at some of your other major funds, your capital projects fund. You spent this year 296,000 on your drainage project, 35,000 on vehicles, and 118,000 on equipment, software, and other capital assets. We talked about that transfer. Remember that y'all moved in right at the end of the year? Well, that leaves you, along with other monies from previous years, a balance of $3 million to hopefully be able to address ball field lights, more drainage projects, you know, other needs as they come up. It's always better to be able to respond with some of your own cash than have to borrow. So a lot of our entities don't always have that ability. They always have to borrow sometimes when they have issues that come up from a capital perspective. Okay, next. Accommodation funds. Again, these are accommodation taxes that relate to, you know, hotel and, you know, various stays on the island. You have a total fund balance there of 2.3 million. The revenues were higher by about 399,000 dollars. And again, you're starting to see a pickup in the tourism-related revenues. We're seeing that mainly in the coastal areas. A lot of our rural areas, well, I would say in the heartland of South Carolina, we're not really seeing much of an increase at all. It's very flat. You're getting to see the growth, because people are traveling again. They're going to the beach. They're doing, eating out more, like we'll see down in the hospitality tax fund. So the hospitality tax fund, since I kind of was just talking about that, the fund balance there is 376,000, and the revenues were slightly higher by 39,000, which was an 8% increase. But you see how those are the drivers. What we're seeing is a lot of our growth revenues, along with the business licenses and permits that we're seeing with most of our governmental entities. Next slide. The Beach Restoration Fund. Remember, back in 2008, we had some major damage along the beach. We had a whole bunch of private, public partnership where money was coming in to help address this issue. We kind of show you where the money came from, kind of a history snapshot. And we recognize revenue every year to the extent that we continue to have costs associated with that project. Because if those revenues or the monies that we receive from all those in the second bullet point, if we end up doing all the work and there's excess money, we have to get it back. So these funds right here, every year as we spend them, we recognize the revenue, we have the expenditure, and we're left with, at the end of the year, 697,000 dollars available for future beach restoration projects. Okay, the Marina Enterprise Fund. It had net assets of 4.2 million, which decreased 200,000 dollars. And that initially, to me, would be troubling. And that initially, to me, would be troubling. We had a decrease of $200,000. But the real issue here that created the decrease was, remember, you had a really, really big dredging project. And the dredging project, you spent $600,000, but we didn't get to capitalize that as an asset. How do you capitalize dredging? And so that took away from your net assets because you had to expend cash for that. Next slide. Back, probably back in the early 2000s, the GAZBEE came out with GAZBEE 34. And the purpose of that GAZBEE was to require governments to prepare financial statements on the same basis as corporate America. And so if you looked in your report, like on page 14 and 15, there's some statements in there that are presented on the same basis as IBM. You look at it, they're on the full, cruel basis of accounting. But also, GAZBEE 34 wanted to provide some additional information in this report because they thought it would be important to you. So they required that a management's discussion and analysis be included in the report. That can be found on pages three through 11. It's a quick snapshot of what took place this past year. It's about eight pages and it tries to highlight in kinda as much as accountants can put things in layman's terms, what happened. So that if you ever, you know, come to this document, you're kinda like, you know, I kinda wanna know what happened real quickly, turn to pages three through 11. And it really will provide you a quick snapshot. In addition, they asked that budgetary comparison schedules be included in the document. And those are on pages 52 through 56. And the importance of the budgetary comparison schedules were is that they wanted governments to not only put the final budget, maybe you made amendments or revisions to the budget throughout the year, they wanted to see what your original budget was. So we wanna see your original budget that you first enacted before July 1st of every year. We wanna see any revisions you made to it so that we know what your final budget is. Then we wanna see actual, so that we can see a picture, how well did they really do to that original budget? It's because what was happening is, a lot of governments would come up with an original budget and it would be way off. They would amend and come up with a revised budget and then make it equal actual, so they looked like they were perfect. And they would never have to, you know, present the original budget. The old GAZBs didn't require it. So these governments looked like they were, you know, being able to see the future. And so the GAZBEE sat back saying, no, 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 we wanna want you to share on these statements, the original budget, the final budget, and actual. So you, as council, can get a good feel, how are we really doing compared to what we approved right from the get-go? And the good thing is, is if you go look at those on those pages that I mentioned to you, you will always see that, you know, you're really doing, always coming in better using on your revenues and you're usually lower than your expenditures. A lot of governments we go to, they're out of whack. And so that's one thing I'll just, you know, highlight to you, make you consider looking at on pages 52 through 56 in the future, just to kinda skim those. There's some other changes there. Again, the bottom bullet point is the key. They wanted to show the financial condition and activity for the city as a whole. Not just your cash, but your long-term assets and liabilities on these government-wide statements. Okay, so on those statements, again, these are on pages 14 and 15, you had total assets of 37.9 million, of which 66% of those are capital assets. They're your property, plant, equipment, they're your trucks, your buildings, and so forth. 30% of it is in cash investments and 4% is other miscellaneous assets generally are receivables. You had total liabilities of 16.2 million. 90% of that is debt, 4% unearned revenue, and 6% other accrued liabilities. Net assets is assets minus liabilities. You wanna have a net asset, you don't want a net deficit. You have net assets of 21.7. And then we just highlight real briefly on these government-wide statements that you had 12.4 million revenue, 11.4 million in expenses, which we showed depreciation because when we buy these assets, we depreciate them over time on these government-wide statements. And so your change in net assets was approximately 1 million. Other items, we just like to kinda highlight some other things that are going on. A lot of these are noted in the notes to the financial statements. The city entered into a five-year contract in July 2010 for ditch maintenance for approximately 438,000. In April 2012, the city awarded a contract to a sports lighting company for approximately $348,000 for the ball field lights. That, you know, that construction didn't occur in 2012, it's occurring in 2013. In August 2012, the city entered to agreement to purchase a one-acre lot at the intersection of 18th Avenue and Palm Boulevard and to accept 18th Avenue as a public road conditional on the approval of rooting belt funding. As Linda was telling me earlier, so far, so good, but there's still four stages that you have to go through for it to all be approved. And the last thing we wanted to highlight on this slide is that your bond rating improved. You know, it went from AA2 to AA1 in May 2012. Next slide. Okay, the real fun part for all us accounting people. You know, last year, GAZBEE 54 had to be implemented by the city. If you remember, the old terminology was that fund balance was either reserved or unreserved. And in the unreserved category, there was designated and undesigned. Well, GAZBEE felt like that was confusing. We talked about this a lot last year, and they thought five categories would be better. So it always tell you, so they have the categories of non-spendable, restricted. Again, restricted would be if you have a grant money, you know, you can only spend it for grants. You have hospitality tax money, it has to be spent on tourism-related activities, it can't just be on anything. If you have bond proceeds, again, it would have to be for whatever the project was that you issued the bond for. So that's what restricted would be. Committed, again, remember, you have a commitment on the disaster recovery, so that was a commitment that you, as a council, made, so that money is pigeonholed, is sitting there just in case this day comes that that money's there and available. You have assigned money. Assigned money would be just tentative decisions by US Council or Linda. You've given her the power to make assignments. And those could change, and sometimes assignments might be for various small capital projects or stuff that you wanna, you know, constrain money for. And of course, the last category, which is kinda the old unreserved, undesigned category, is the unassigned category. Okay, I know that was exciting. The next one, I wanted to highlight, there's a, GAZBEE is in a mode of issuing lots of new rules for everybody. Sometimes I'll worry about how truly valuable or important that they are, but GAZBEE 60 came out on service concession arrangements. And we're gonna be working with, talking with Debbie on this topic, is that your Marina, because you have someone else that's managing it or runs certain aspects, you have leases related to it, I don't think there's gonna be any implication, but they want to provide clear guidance on how do you deal with those type of relationships. Mainly service concession arrangements dealt with, what if a government has a toll road and you sell the toll road to somebody else so that they can manage it and they buy it from you for a price so that they can collect tolls for the next 30 years? And that's what they're trying to do with public-private partnerships there. Okay, next slide. Okay, GAZBEE 63. Next year on page 14, we're no longer gonna have a statement of net assets. Remember, I kept saying assets minus liabilities is net assets? Well, GAZBEE felt like they needed to add two new items to the balance sheet, which totally makes no sense to me. Even corporate America, assets minus liabilities equals equity. Well, GAZBEE feels like we need two new categories of deferred outflows and deferred inflows. And I just don't think anybody's gonna really understand, because I really don't even fully understand. But what they're gonna do later in GAZBEE 65 here is they're gonna start taking certain liabilities and they're gonna make those deferred inflows. And they're gonna take certain assets and they're gonna reclassify them and make them deferred outflows. The whole bucket's the same total, they're just gonna reshuffle all the little pieces. I think it's gonna get very confusing. So they can't call it net assets anymore because it's now assets plus deferred outflows minus liabilities minus deferred inflows equals now net position. And that's the new term that you're gonna see here of statement of net position. So we'll deal with that. Hopefully, we won't spend a lot of time on that. Okay, the last item on this, on this slide, I think this one's the real important one that we've talked about in the past. The GAZBEE did finally issue GAZBEE 68 and 67, and they've refined and kinda come up with new principles for accounting for pensions. One of the ones that I felt was interesting was is that if you're in a multiple cost-sharing plan, like you are in the South Carolina retirement system, that you're in the South Carolina Police Officers Retirement System, if the state plan is underfunded, you're gonna have to record your portion of that liability on your statement of net assets, statement of net position going forward. So even though statutorily and legally, those are not your obligations, you know, you don't have to pay those people, but their view is, is that if the state plan is underfunded, who's gonna probably make up that short bond? Where do you think the state's gonna go to? And their argument is all the participating employers, which are the cities, the counties, school districts, are gonna have to kick in more money, and so you should have to report that liability because you're probably gonna ultimately have to pay. So just to let you know, this is not gonna kick in until 2015, but all of a sudden, you're gonna see this huge liability just appear on your balance sheet. And it's gonna drop right there in your statement of net assets, statement of net position, those numbers gonna go way down because you're not gonna have as many net assets anymore. So just to let you know, I don't know what those numbers are yet, but that's something the state will have to provide us. But it's, to me, a little troubling. I could understand them wanting to disclose that in the notes, that this is important, the state has this underfunded plan, but why we would have to record an obligation that legally we're not responsible for? I think that's a little of a stretch, but of course, they think it's important and they accept the rules. Okay, next slide. On the auditing front, there's just really one major change to me, is the clarification or recodification statements. And what they're doing is they're converging international auditing standards and US auditing standards into one. And so what you're gonna see is a little bit change in terminology, the opinions. Well, they say it's gonna be more plain English, that'll be interesting to see, probably a little more European in the flavor of them, but again, there's gonna be some just change in terminology. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of substance change with it. Wanted to highlight a couple of last notes here. If you get federal money, there's always strings attached. And usually, if you, of course, if you get more than $500,000, we have to do a single audit, which costs more money, and there's things that you have to comply with too. So just wanna let you know down the road, you know, if you get federal money, it sounds great, but there's always cost to it. There's always ramifications to it. One thing that we noticed as we were doing the audit this year is that your accounting system, it is dated in a lot of areas. You got some areas that are on a DOS system. Some of them have been replaced over time, but they don't talk real well with one another. So what we've decided to put on your radar, this might be more of a five- to 10-year horizon thing, but you know, you might wanna look at trying to get a fully integrated accounting system. Because right now, sometimes when Debbie or Linda wanna look for something, it's not always the easiest to get everything that you wanna get. One system has this, and now we gotta go over there, but they don't really talk real well. So again, just put that on your future time horizon there, something maybe to look at at. One last thing, and we've had this on the radar for a couple of years and progress is being made each year, you know, is to have a real comprehensive policy and procedure man. And you know, and honestly, we normally wouldn't even have this as an important point, but your management thinks it's important and the council in the past has said, you know, I think this is important that we take all that we're doing and get it down in writing so that if someone leaves, there's transitioning, something happens, we know how to handle a certain transaction. And they're meticulously going through it, but you remember, they got full-time jobs just to do the normal stuff. And so, you know, my whole point is, I want you to know they're working on it, but it's gonna take probably several more years. And honestly, even when they finish it, things change. Then you gotta keep up to it. So it's gonna be a really ongoing, you know, active document. Kind of, very quickly, any questions?
Okay, questions? What'd he say?
Or net position.
Page 8, note 15, you're stating that we're gonna eliminate two funds, is that correct?
Oh, you're talking slide?
Does that?
Yeah, that was last year. Yeah, that was last year we did.
Okay.
Yes. Because that GAZBEE wouldn't allow those funds to remain.
Page 75 of your report on internal controls said that we noted certain
Certain matters.
Certain matters reported management's city in a separate letter, day of October 8. That's the same day as the report, is that a management?
Yeah, that's that letter, and that's that recommendation, we had that long-term recommendation of having a comprehensive accounting policy and procedure man.
Okay. I spent a lot of time auditing in my youth in DC and I talked with you briefly about this a couple of times, that I wanna... You touched on it when you first presented the presentation tonight, about what an unqualified opinion means, you know? And there's some speculation that, you know, that an unqualified opinion by an auditor is like, it's just like a grade of A, or we've made 100, or we made a 95 or something like that. And if I remember correctly, there was like three basic opinions, you know, adverse, qualified, and unqualified. And unqualified is really good. That means that the city's books are in order and, you know, we're keeping our financial house in order. But I don't, I don't wanna say this to get anybody upset, but don't most of your, if you're not getting unqualified opinion as independent auditors, aren't you trying to get that municipality or that firm recommendations in order to make sure that next year they get an unqualified opinion? I mean, the point I'm making is the vast majority of opinions are unqualified.
Okay, that is correct.
The vast majority, like over 80%?
I would think that's probably correct, yes.
Okay.
And I think, you know, there are disclaimer opinions, like there are some other types. You know, what we have found is a lot of times the smaller entities, sometimes a lot of entities very similar to you, just don't have any financial resources or people that have an accounting background that can keep up with it. So we can't really audit it. We pretty much have to do all the work, we can't get an opinion. So we see that a lot of real small, or if there's a lot of transition that goes in an organization, a lot, a whole bunch of people left, and they can't get everybody back in in time, and so the numbers are not auditable. And so sometimes, you know, there's those situations, but yes, you are correct. In general terms, you know, most of the clients we wanna associate with, we wanna make sure we feel comfortable that they know what they're doing, and we don't really want to get associated and do an engagement with them.
Right. We, the city does a very good job.
They do.
With their internal controls.
They do.
And Debbie does now stand the job, and I'm the first to say that. But also, the bond rating for Moody's and Standard and Poor's, that's just as important indication of the financial health of the city as an unqualified opinion from independent CPA. Do you agree with that?
Oh, yeah, I like it.
And that is improved.
Yeah. I mean, you really, you know, you really have been wise in keeping your fund balances in line and consistent. I mean, they like to be able to see a track record. And, you know, the bond, financial advisors, all those people are looking at that. And when they see someone that's meeting their targets and going forward, that builds confidence and allows them to give you a better, usually a better interest rate.
Thanks, three times.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One, the last part, you talked about a fully integrated accounting system. How many of the communities or internal controls are using such systems?
Um, most.
So I ask that question just to kinda, you know, I do think we do a good job from my perspective, but at the same time, is that...
Well, you know, honestly, I've always found, and I remember I was in corporate America a lot of time, let's go with this new enterprise resource system, they cost money. And a lot of times, you don't get all the bang for the buck that they promised to you, but you gotta realize, your system is getting pretty old now. And there's a certain point where the law of diminishing returns, you just, you're kinda band-aiding. As a system goes down, you replace it with another, you know, module that's not integrated with the other one, and so they don't talk. And so over time, you have all these different, you know, modules, but they're not really from the same vendor, they don't talk well with each other, they don't talk well with the general ledger, and same for it. Now, your staff has made it all work, they know what they have to do, and so it is a big pain changer. That's why I'm saying, it needs to be a long-term time horizon, and you find something down the road that fits your size and complexity. There's some packages that are great with utility, but you don't have a lot of utilities, you don't want one of those packages. You wanna find something that fits your core government well. And I think, you know, if you do a good bit of research and exploration, you can find something down the road. Hopefully, it won't be too expensive.
I think that insight is quite helpful to us because we, our council, sit here and ask Debbie or Linda, magically, information appears, but we don't know how far they had to dig, how many different sources they had to go to to put it together. But to see, have an outsider like yourselves look at what they do on a basis, pull that stuff together for us and for me, it's important for us to look ahead, and maybe it takes a year or two, and I don't know how big this thing's gonna get as far as time or money, but we need to become fully integrated, that's a good point.
Would it also help save us money in our auditing with y'all to have it, wanting to assist us?
I'm not trying to cut your job, but... No, I mean, in theory, you know, the good thing is, what happens now is, they have to spend their time getting schedules for us. Well, it may just take them less time now to get all their schedules. Well, it may just take them less time now to get all their schedules together. At the end of the day, they're forgetting us what we need to audit, but it takes them the time to do it, not necessarily us. And your general ledger package is nice, but what we're talking about, a lot of your collection softwares for business license and permits, they just, they don't talk real well. I mean, some parts of it are really pretty good, some of them aren't as good. See what I'm saying? You've just got to hodgepodge, and that just makes it a little more difficult.
Okay, Michael?
First of all, I enjoy your show every year. I'll get Junior up here in a couple of minutes.
On slide number two, you say our year-end condition is very good. What would it take us to get to excellent? I mean, I thought we had a pretty solid outstanding year.
You know, I'll be honest with you, we get kind of static. We get static with our language, I'll be honest with you. I don't know if we ever put an excellent on it, because, you know, we're accountants, we hedge, we're conservative. If we did too much, you'd be, "Hey!" So, yeah, I'll be honest with you, that's not to mean anything, that's just, you know, we do think that you're in very, very good shape, you know, very well-funded. What helps you too is remember those hospitality accommodation tax ones. I mean, you have a lot of benefits that, let's say, a lot of the rural communities don't have. I mean, they generate, and it creates a lot of extra work too, because you have all the traffic and people coming across, but it does, you should get some resources for that, to deal with some of those issues, and deal with some of the tourism-related construction, and maybe you can find with some of those monies and with some of your general.
Okay. Other questions, concerns?
Well, I want to thank you for your time and efforts with us. I really want to thank Debbie and Linda and the rest of the team for being able to move with dispatch while the auditors are here, so that, I don't want to say we'd like to see you leave, but we do like to see you, we do like to see you leave. But we'd like to see you leave on a positive note. You left us with a very good taste in our mouth and some work to do for the future. I'm pleased with the heads up that you've given us and the information, so.
We'd like to see an unqualified exit.
No further questions? Thank you very much.
Now, they're always open for questions if anybody, if you've been reading the Green Book, you know, tonight or tomorrow morning, if you have questions, they're freely accessible. That's one of the good things of the government of Minnesota, as long as they're better than us.
All right, any other, we're still in Citizens Comment, any other Citizens Comment, want to come forward?
We'll move on to reports from standing committees, how we report on Ways and Means Committee, from May 20th to the 16th, and 5:45, we hear from our treasurer. We're one quarter of the way through the year. Our revenues are, we've again received the second installment, we've only probably the last installment from the SC LGA-G of $125,000, which puts us ahead of where we would normally be this time of year. Other than that, we will be right on par with where we were last year. On the expense side, again, at 25% of the year, we're running at 21% of our annual expense budget, so we're four points under our budget, so that's all really good. And our cash on hand in the bank is $2.5 million of BB and P, and then another chunk at LG and P. The treasurer foreshadowed for us the likelihood that we think to exceed our legal expenses. Thank you, Sterling. 13.
I don't think I was the one that was playing.
You're the only one here, I hear. You're the only one I hear. So much of it has to do with prosecuting the government, I will comment on that, but that's just more of a budgeting error than an effort of our, of our treasury. Our tourism activities, again, are running ahead of prior year, 8% of municipal accommodations tax, and our hospitality tax is running at 18%. That will trend out because we have people paying now that weren't paying in the same period last year, so that did catch up the last year, so all in all, hospitality tax will probably fall more in line with where we are in accommodations tax. And as I mentioned there, we are still, ourselves and Charleston County are still chasing the Department of Revenue and the State Treasurer, because there were some anomalies in the funds submitted to Charleston County from the State Treasurer. And we both, both Charleston County and ourselves and anybody else that looks at it believes those funds belong to municipalities within Charleston County, not the county itself. That is ongoing, not much more to report. We have Project South Street work on both food restoration and drainage, no significant interactions ongoing there. We have a discussion on our general fund year-end gain, and we approved and I'd like to make a motion to move an increase, to increase our disaster recovery fund to a $2 million, using approximately $156,000 of our FY12 general fund gain, which is currently in the unrestricted capital projects fund. Move that to the disaster recovery fund.
So moved?
Second motion, seconded. Any further discussion? I've heard, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We now have a $2 million disaster recovery fund. I'd now like to move to the next motion we took out, which was basically two parts, and that had to do with paying off the remaining capital leases, so that in addition to the budgeted lease payment, I'd like to move to pay off the remaining capital leases with approximately $126,426 from the unrestricted capital projects fund. I'll make that motion first, second.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none heard, thank you. And the second part of that is, continuing to pay off the capital leases would require around $69,180 from each of the municipal accommodations tax and the state accommodations tax. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion seconded. These, of course, are unbudgeted, and we will be reporting them as unbudgeted excesses over the course of the year, but so be it. The funds are there, and it's a good thing to do to pay off all the remaining capital leases, so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none heard, thank you. Hopefully next year, we'll be able to take funds and set up a sinking fund reserve for any future capital rolling stocks, and we can pay as we go, and we have our knees in the future. We also had a recommendation from the Real Property Committee, approved by Ways and Means to reimburse, to reimburse Mr. and Mrs. Philip Smith in the amount of $4,833.20, continued upon the signing, a waiver releasing the city of any financial plan until 2012, dredging project. I'll make that as a motion.
As a second.
Motion seconded. These are funds that we probably would have spent anyhow, if we listened for some communication gaps between ourselves, the Phillips and Philip Smith and the treasurer. Be that as it may, we're spending $4,833.20, approved. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none heard, thank you. And also, we took up the discussion of adopting a fraud policy, maybe one of the, our auditors have to say, continuing effort by the staff to put together a comprehensive policies and procedures. One of the procedures or policies, I guess, is to have a fraud prevention policy in place. We took that up, it was developed by the staff, Linda in particular, and we considered that and approved it. So I'll make a motion to adopt the fraud policy on, to prevent fraud, if you get the right title. I'll make that in the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have a written one?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Should be second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none heard, motion carries. We now have a policy to prevent fraud. Thank you. All right, so we set our next meeting up on November 27th, just prior to our next council meeting. We'll do it on 17th, 6th.
Beach access parking, we've authorized, council's authorized a second phase of work for StanTech that incorporates beach access parking with non-conditioned signage. At the meeting with the beach access parking team, the StanTech team indicated to city staff, they've completed their study of the materials the city provided. That was all of the information that's been gathered over the past, I know, more than a year of all that work there. And Assistant DuMann noted that the money is in the court in Building Department, FY13 budgets for a new sign in front of City Hall. And the City Hall will require SC DOT approval, so we've got to get the details of the color and lettering and all. Under new business, discussion of transition plan for consolidated dispatch. City administrator brought this to our attention, and we've talked about this before. We've had some communities that have transitioned or begun to transition to the new dispatch center, and it hasn't gone well. In fact, one of the beach community pulled out. So our thoughts are to have someone on the island, if you will, listening or ghosting what the county is doing, and that can be for a period of time of from one to four years, and would cause the city, of course. And this will be discussed when we begin our evaluation process, but I want to make you aware that there is that, that's coming up to us. We had our departmental reports. Some of the highlights of the fire department report given by Chief Grant. Personnel responded to a boat sinking, and they actually pumped the water out and plugged the hole in the bay to save the boat. Had a medical call on 55th Avenue, found the man in cardiac arrest, and due to the CPR efforts, he was breathing unisom and is doing well today. They responded to 61 calls, 34 of those were EMS calls. 13 fire inspections were performed in the month, and the fire inspection's been working with wild dudes relative to a problem with one of their major warning systems. Fire department report from Chief Buchanan. Dispatchers answered 3,907 calls. 285 traffic stops resulted in 77 citations. Three community meetings were held, which is a new program the chief is doing, and he will be doing, he will be doing more in the future. The chief noted the fear of crime on the odds is very low, resulting in people letting their guard down. Stress residents and visitors should lock their homes and cars. If your car is parked in the driveway, it should be locked. It just makes sense. We caught some folks a month ago, you hear about that, the personnel report, which led to the solving of about 24 break-ins. Our next meeting will be on the 7th, 5 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Anything for public safety? All right, let's move on. Public Works, please.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The committee met after the fourth, committee members were present. We went into the department report for September. Director Perez noted that the department has slowed down in the beach sweep since September. The streets will be on an as-ne basis in the coming months and in the off-season. We've gone through, EDS has completed the cleaning of the vegetation of the drainage ditches, and the next step is cleaning the environment, collecting masses. During the month, Charleston County Public Works was on the island to use the camera to visualize 21st Avenue storm water system, and they found a couple of problems that can be repaired, utilizing our city's stormwater funds to do the work. Since the introduction of our single-stream recycling, our garbage tonnage has gone down in debris collection at the average. I noticed that the other day when I took my garbage out on Monday, I rolled out nearly two empty containers. So, it's interesting.
Maybe you can consolidate just one.
Right, you're absolutely right. The boys are in out and just throwing it away. So, but it's interesting, I've actually recognized that in my own house, so. And we're filling up both of our full recycling bins. Moving on, we had some requests, requested the county to go through and put together some educational material for both the renters and residents on how the recycling program works. We've noticed that some folks don't know necessarily when the carts go out, when to pull them back, what those end, so Charleston County, when they develop a package of materials for locations of rental properties, that includes a cover letter, an explanation, magnets for the interior of the properties, a brochure, and a flyer. And that package is targeted for the short-term rental homes and renters who understand the best use of those pens. They're working on a county plan, the county's working on plans to distribute that within the next three or four weeks, and they're working on a project now for, as well as for the island residents. Also, if anybody has a question, do go on the county website as well, and find out what the recycling plans are. Update on our county transportation, committee on resurfacing, just FYI, some of the resurfacing projects that'll be going on in the island are Charleston Boulevard from Carolina to Fourth Avenue, the avenues 5th through 13th, Oak Harbor and Hartnett Boulevard from 34th to 41st, will be resurfaced. Our next meeting is Monday, November 5th. Anyone have any questions?
So, interesting that the blue containers for the other half of the island should start next week?
They should start next week, correct.
I wanted to add that, make sure, yeah, well, 100% island blue container.
No, I thought, I don't know who did it, but I should have made a note. Somebody, I think it was a rental property, actually put a sticker on the blue container, telling anybody to approach the blue container, typically renters, what should be going in there, and when it should go in. I thought that was, I'm not sure that's part of the company's package or something, a property management company?
Yeah, I don't believe it is.
That only has a sticker on it.
It seemed to be informative so that people can help throw their, household waste and stuff like that. Good, I'm looking forward to it. It's a big plus for both houses as well as the cycling.
Correct, I'd agree.
Any other questions for Public Works? All right, Recreation Committee, please.
The Rec Committee met on October 11th. All members were present, once again, every month on a broken record, busy with ending the summer programs, being the fall programs, 3-on-3 basketball, tend to participate in the new 6-on-6 adult soccer, he has 16 teams. Registered adult table tennis league has 10 people. Soccer continues to draw everyone from all ages. Dog training. Teenagers had their first meeting September 5th, 60 seniors had lunch and played bingo. Another first for the fall was the middle school dance, held for 28th December, 320 young people attended. This fall, there's a tiny tennis for children 3 to 5 years old, and the session beginning October 1st, and we split into two classes due to the number of children registered, so that's great. I can't imagine a little tennis racket.
Stick to my hands.
Sooba continues to be a huge success, 40 participants. Tai Chi is geared for seniors, has 35 attendees. For the annual wellness fair, which is always a huge success, 36 employees participated, more than 200 residents attended. The Halloween carnival's coming up, 5 to 7 on Wednesday, October 31st. We're expecting about 800 young people, so get your costume ready. Annual, of course, in the future, we're still working on the annual Christmas tree lighting, which is going to be really a street festival on December 8th from 3 to 7, so stay tuned. Ferris wheel, climbing wall, Big Sly, children and adults. The ball field lights are in and working, and everyone seems to be happy, including the residents around the, around the area. What do you think?
It's phenomenal. The lights are right down the field, and there's no blur or bleed in the residence.
The internals will let you too. A new business we're considering, and I hope pushing forward with changing our sort of hokey old-fashioned signs, as you, I said, did I say that out loud? Anyway, changing to electronic signs at the reach inlet and at the bottom of the connector, which will allow us a lot more versatility and a lot less manpower. Right now, we're like 10 to 12 hours a month, and I bet it's more than that to change the signs. So we're still working on that, some things to work out, we've got three quotes, it seems like a reasonable thing to do, and just decide the best way to do it. So we'll keep you tuned on that. The photo contest is also still running, so last year's winners get in there and get those photos in for this year, goes through, I think, just about election day. Our next meeting will be November 7th at 4:00.
Excellent. Any questions for?
Yeah, I guess I'm confused about the electronic message board. I thought during the budget process earlier this year, we...
Well, we're moving forward. We're moving forward. I mean, I think the cost, I think it's become more efficient cost-wise to do it. I think we're going to have to defend it and make you want to do it, but I think it's about time. These signs are going to have to be replaced. They're going to have to be upgraded in some way. So there's a cost to that. There's a cost to the labor that, and if something happens on a weekend, we have riptides on the weekend, you're calling people in overtime and changing signs. I mean, yeah, we did reject it last year. That doesn't mean we can't look at it yet. And the technology's gotten better, and I think a lot cheaper though.
I don't know. I think it's going to look like Walgreens. This is, I mean, I'm really, this is.
Well, wait, wait.
I have, I'd like to see one that I can think will fit the character and the welcome home that our signs have right now for the island.
Well, actually, the one that we don't have the photo of, it really just adapts the bottom of the existing signs. So where the lettering is, that would be replaced with a module that would fit in there, that would be electronic. So the sign virtually would be as it is now, only with a much more efficient. I mean, if we have an evacuation, there's just all sorts of possibilities besides the normal, you know, every day or every other day having to change the signs.
Put me down as a doubting Thomas.
I think she anticipated that.
Boss, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, electronic sign with vandalism, do we have that?
You are aware that the signs get changed, that the staff has to make corrections.
Cheap language on there sometimes.
Yeah. We'll make our spiel and, you know, go for it.
On a very lighter note, I want to thank Norma Jean and staff for doing a great wacky golf. Sorry to show you up in my driving. Good job.
Good. Excellent. All right. Moving on. Personnel Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Personnel Committee met at 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 9th, with all members of the committee in attendance, along with City Administrator Tucker and Assistant Emily Juven. Discussion was followed on 2013 appointments to boards and commissions. Following people are being recommended for reappointment. ATAX Committee, Margaret Miller. Board of Zoning Appeals, Arnold Ferret. Board of Appeals, Brian Carter. Planning Commission, Bev Ballow and Don Smith. The following people are being recommended for reap, for appointment, the first group was for reappointment. Planning Commission, Richard Ferenz and Penny Lewis. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals, Glenn Torneberg. This is a slate of candidates that the committee will bring forward for the city council's consideration in this December 4th, 2012 special meeting. Next, Assistant Juven reported on the progress of updating the personnel manual. She stated that the city's goal is to have a revised personnel manual adopted by the end of 2012. She explained that this revision was a meshing of the most recent handbook model of the Municipal Association of South Carolina and the existing IOP personnel manual. The city hopes to have the legal review completed to make the recommendations in council at the November meeting. The committee unanimously approved the appointment of Lawrence Duffy as Associate Judge to serve, which Judge Malone is not available. This appointment is recommended with a term beginning November 5th, 2012 through December 31st, 2014. I'd like to, would like to put this in the form of a motion.
So you'd like to appoint Lawrence Duffy as Assistant Judge?
Correct.
Term beginning November 15th, 2012 through 2014?
Associate Judge.
Associate Judge. Okay. Motion seconded. And any discussion? Larry versus the sitting municipal judge on Solid Island, so it's in his comfort zone. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next is the August Safety Sweepstakes winner is Recreation Will McAlany. Public Works John Graham. Police Department Chris Quinn. And Fire Department Tywan Hayward. The next is kind of a very special thing that happened, and it's quite a story. But the employees of the month are Detective Sergeant Gary Erickson and Detective Diane Tar. And this is quite an accomplishment here for these people. On July 20th, 2012, the police department responded to a call regarding a stolen vehicle reported by a woman visiting the Isle Palms with her four-year-old daughter. Through a series of steps, including information gathering and cooperation with the Mount Pleasant, the perpetrators were taken into custody that day, and the car was located and returned to the mother and daughter. In the weeks following, more went on. Detective Sergeant Erickson and Detective Tar were able to link the suspects, as well as a number of their friends and relatives, to 25 incidents that occurred on the Isle Palms. Additionally, the police work of detectives allowed the Mount Pleasant Police Department, the Somerville Police Department, and the Charleston County Sheriff's Office to close a number of thefts and burglary cases in their respective jurisdictions. I'd also like to recognize, as this case goes to Captain Donan Caldwell and Captain Tim Ostrick. This is Training Field Officer Chris Quinn, and Telecommunication Officer Jane Stewart. What is your comment?
Very good. They are employees. Very good.
Our next meeting is at 9:30 Monday, November 5th, in the proper.
Well, very good. Thank you. That was a very good effort on their part, and a good result. We don't like to see all that febrile going on on the island, but when it happens, we want to catch them. So that's good. All right. Real Property Committee, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Real Property Committee met on October 8th this year, and Councilman Stone and myself were present. Councilman Buchanan was excused. Under old business, the RFP for the city parking lots was discussed, and one option the company, the city was looking at was studying and possibly bringing that function in the city under city administration. It was decided due to the numbers, it really didn't make any sense to move in that direction. So the committee voted for a RFP. Some changes have been made. Number one, looking at a base of 100,000 plus rent of 30% in excess of 100K. And included, that was passing a motion by the committee to increase parking from $5 to $6 per day. Update on 41st Avenue ditch, we actually covered this during Ways and Means, and so it's been handled already. All marina tenants are currently as rents due to the city. Next meeting is set for November 13th at 5:00 PM.
Very good. Thank you. So the most pressing matter before you now is municipal parking, because you need it operating by seasoned experts, so. You know.
She's on it, boss.
You know better than I do. All right. Any questions for Real Property? Thank you. Boards and commissions, Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, minutes are in your package. Assuming no questions. Move on to introduction of new bills, since we've already dealt with the first reading by Title 12, ordinance 2012-09, and ordinance amendment Title VII, Licensing Regulation Chapter 1, Business Licenses for Delay, Count, Provisions, City Isle Palm Code ordinances to change provisions for insurance companies to conform with the state law. Make motion for a first reading?
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? I would like to ask the administrator just briefly as to why we're doing this, and why it's important for us to execute it in a timely fashion.
There was a change in state law that happened June 28th, 2012. And as a result of that change, there's a requirement for a blended broker's premium tax rate, which basically states that that blended rate can be 6%, which, you know, is a 4% state rate and up to a 2% municipal rate. And then there have also been some slight language changes that we've had to make to come into compliance with that. The municipal association sent us a model ordinance to use. The city attorney has taken that and has conformed it to, we need to make changes in our business license code to be in compliance. And then, as you all know, the municipal association, this is the insurance business license component, is part of what they collect on our behalf, along with telecommunications licenses and things of that nature. In order for them to be able to do this and continue to do this in a timely fashion for us, we have to sort of re-up our agreement with them under these new terms. And so, so you have the change to the business license ordinance to bring us into compliance, and then the associated agreement that concerns this change, and they're collecting this tax on our behalf.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll take this up again at our next meeting.
We need a text for first reading.
Oh, excuse me. All right. We had motions. All right. All in favor, first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. One opposition. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. Item remaining under miscellaneous, you'll see that we have consideration to consider the open house and customer appreciation goodbye at the Red and White, which they have scheduled for the 16th of November, from 5 to 8. This is the Red and Whites event, although we wanted to appreciate them, they prefer to appreciate the residents of the islands for having given them the business for so many years. And so they've put this event together. I put it on here as a city-sponsored event so that we can provide police protection, do whatever else we can do to make it a festive occasion, which is enough a lot, but we'll make it the right thing. I can tell you that we don't know more about who's going to occupy that space. Pastime amusement company has not come forward with that. They had, however, submitted permit requests of the building department for the construction of the first building. I'll call it the outhouse. And so that's going forward, and they'll probably be permitted to execute that with the necessary resources of the building department. Jimmy?
Yes, sir. Didn't they respond that it was going to be a grocery store, an email? Did you say that?
Yeah, they did say grocery store.
Recently, like this week.
They've been consistent.
Yeah. That's good. At least it's not waves and things. Yeah.
When we met with them first, two years ago, we said we wanted a grocery store there. If they couldn't keep the Red and White, we definitely need a grocery store. I'm not sure that's swaying them. But it didn't matter. They've said all along that they're intent.
They've said this week again.
So I'm hoping everybody can be in attendance at that time. Even if you're not, I'd like a motion to approve this as a city-sponsored event.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Mayor. For Wayne down at the store and being a city-sponsored event, it's going to be, I think it's going to be a great turnout for the island. I think it's going to be a way for us all to get together, besides our appreciation. I think he's going to need a lot of help. You know, I volunteered, Jimmy, Ryan, saying everybody here is, I'm sure, volunteered down with Wayne, but there's going to be other things that he's going to need that maybe we could provide, whether it be some seating, maybe, because it's going to be not only young people, but some mid-aged people, some elderly people. Anything we can do that we can communicate with Wayne, how can we help him? Whether it be sound systems or whatever. I think we need to try to jump in there and go faster than the speed of normal government.
Well, it's a good point. We'll take it up with him. He has, he has one big concern, and he doesn't want to do anything that affects the other tenants down there. He's very sensitive to the Long Island Cafe. I'm not sure he really worries about Domino's, but he doesn't want to take up all the parking, for instance, et cetera. But I think we can work with him and the rest of the citizens to make it a money-making.
Probably a good stew for all the remaining businesses down there.
It can't be bad. He just may be worried about this more than necessary. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. City-sponsored events. All right. We have our next meeting scheduled at 7:00 on the 27th of November, following the Ways and Means meeting. I'd like to have a motion, however, now to move into executive session to receive some legal advice from our municipal attorney.
So moved.
Motion seconded. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's go into executive session now, please.
There were waves.
There were waves.